Welcome to the Fall Warrant Review Meeting. I am Martha Hanner, Local Action Chair for the Amherst League of Women Voters. The League has organized tonight's meeting in conjunction with the Town Meeting Coordinating Committee in order to acquaint Town Meeting members with the articles that will come up for discussion when Town Meeting convenes on November 19th. The League works to encourage informed government at all levels, including local government. We publish your Amherst government as well as the Town Meeting Handbook. These are available in the Jones Library and on the League's website at www.lwvamherst.org. We also prepare "They Represent You," which is a contact list for all Town Meeting members and local officials. That comes out in the spring after we've had our town elections. Tonight is an informational meeting. The speakers are here to describe the purpose of each warrant article, not the pros and cons. That discussion properly takes place during Town Meeting. We want to thank Amherst Media for televising tonight's event, and welcome to all those of you who are watching from home. To our live audience, please check that your cellphones are turned off. And now I would like to introduce Peggy Roberts, who's the Chair of the Town Meeting Coordinating Committee, who will be the moderator for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Marissa. The Town Meeting Coordinating Committee, or you'll hear us referred to as TMCC very often, is elected by Town Meeting members to try to do everything we can to make our legislative body, the Town Meeting, work as well as it possibly can. We know that informed voters are really a very essential part of good local government or any other level, really. And so, we spend most of our time really trying to inform and prepare Town Meeting members to be able to make decisions on understanding of the articles that are before them. Tonight, we're going to be introducing 19 articles coming before the special Town Meeting, which will start Monday evening, November 19th, at 7:00. And for anyone who is supposed to be at Town Meeting, remember 7:00. We're trying this early time for the first time. We hope that you will be able to understand a little more after you hear the presentations tonight. Those of you at home won't be able to ask questions, but I hope that those of you here will ask some questions. The articles are being presented by people who've been working with the articles, either as members of boards or committees, Town staff, sponsors of petition articles. And in order to manage covering all of the 19 articles, we have allotted a certain amount of time for each one. There will be presentations, and then a chance to answer questions. So please do think of anything that needs more explaining or something you don't understand. We'll be using the same timer that we use in Town Meeting, and Martha is going to be working that. And for the speakers, you should know that the yellow light shows you have one more minute to go, and the red light says you should be finished. And you can use that time as you wish. Okay, the first article I'm going to speak to very briefly in just a couple sentences because it's one that is automatically voted. It simply asks permission from Town Meeting for committees or boards to present reports. And they only speak to these on the floor of Town Meeting if they have not had reports on the back table. So Article 2, 3, and 4 is... These are articles sponsored by the Finance Committee, and Andrew Steinberg, the Chair of the Finance Committee, will speak to those. Andy?
Well, thank you. I want to begin with a thank you to the League and to TMCC for organizing this meeting, for your efforts to explain the warrant to Town Meeting and the community. As Peggy indicated, I've been asked to speak on Articles 2 through 4. The second mailing to Town Meeting members should be in mailboxes by tomorrow or Saturday. It includes the Finance Committee report. Finance Committee makes recommendations on articles that have a financial impact to the town. We have no recommendation on some articles that you will hear about tonight. That indicates that we could not conclude that there's significant information to justify a recommendation, either in support of an article or to recommend against passage. You will also see that we deferred making a decision about some articles. We are waiting for more information... Excuse me. ...in a report to Town Meeting whether the committee has a recommendation, and if so, about that recommendation. Article 2 on the warrant is like Article 1, it is on every warrant. It is to authorize the payment of unpaid bills from prior years. Town Meeting, in that event, needs to appropriate funds to pay them. We don't know of any unpaid bills, and we expect, as usually happens, that there'll be a motion to dismiss. I'm going to spend most of the time today on Article 3 because of its complexity, and it is a motion to ask Town Meeting to appropriate $585,342 to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust, or what I'll call, for the rest of the time, OPEB. And I need to explain to you a little bit about what the problem is with OPEB, the OPEB Trust, and where the money is coming from in order to understand this. The town, like many employers, pays for health insurance for its employees and their families, not just during the time of their employment, but also after they retire. This obligation continues as long as the benefit is needed. The budget each year includes funds to pay the cost for current retirees. That approach is known as pay-as-you-go. The problem with that approach is that employees are getting older, like the rest of us. The required payments will grow every year, and that erodes and will continue to erode much more greatly in the future. The town's capacity to fund current expenses for schools, public safety, road maintenance, libraries, and all of the other essential programs that are so important to our community. We have all heard about a public employee pension crisis across the country in the many states and localities that have confronted this crisis. Massachusetts is actually doing pretty well in comparison to many states. Our pension funds are well managed. Unfortunately, we have not planned for our other benefits, such as health coverage, to the degree that we've planned for our pensions. And it is an obligation of each city and town. Amherst's current obligation for present and future retirees for health coverage is now upwards of $75 million. That is not currently shown on the town's annual financial statement as a liability, but we owe the money to our employees, and we're required to report it in a footnote to the statements. Our bond rating agency considers the obligation. Failing to address it would affect future ratings and borrowing costs. One mechanism to address this obligation is to have an OPEB trust. That is a way to set aside current funds to pay the future obligation to current employees. Funds in a trust can be invested. Town Meeting established an OPEB trust two years ago, but put no money into it, and we still have put no money into it. And it's sort of like analogous to any of us having a 401K but not having put any money into it. It doesn't really do any good. So it's time to start putting money into the trust. So the question is, where are the funds coming from that we would put into the trust? At the last annual Town Meeting, we assumed level funding of state aid and adopted a budget. The state subsequently allocated an amount that was $585,342 higher than the amount we assumed. The Finance Committee is not recommending any additional expenditures for the current year, so we recommend placing that additional amount that we received from the state into the OPEB trust. So now I'd like to ask for the slide that I gave you so that I can talk very briefly about Article 4, which will transfer part of our reserves from free cash to the stabilization fund. On the screen, you will see a graph that shows that our reserves, which are free cash plus stabilization fund, have begun to recover after they were significantly reduced in fiscal year 2006. The town's financial management policies and objectives state that reserves should be from 5% to 15% of general fund operating revenue, and that if free cash exceeds 5% of operating revenue, the excess may be appropriated to the stabilization fund. As of July 1st, 2012, the town's state-certified free cash balance was $4,326,501, or 6.5% of operating revenues. The stabilization fund contained $1,874,393. The bar that you see on the graph on the far right represents the current amount, the total of those two, and is 9.3% of revenues, which is slightly less than the midpoint of the target range for total reserves. The Finance Committee will move to transfer free cash in excess of 5% of operating revenues to the stabilization fund. The fund remains fully available to us for future use with Town Meeting approval, but the stabilization fund is like a bank account in which we have a little bit more control. So, thank you.
Is it appropriate to ask a question now?
Yes, yes.
Related to Article 3?
Yes.
So what you're saying...
Wait for the microphone.
Do I need to say who I am? Jim Bursette, Precinct 6. So my question relates to Article 3, that half a million dollars. Is that a one-time?
Yes.
A one-time?
Yes, this is a one-time appropriation. If it is voted at Town Meeting to do this, it is just for this year from the funds that we have currently available and have identified as a source. I think that what we would like to see in what would be sound financial policy in the future is in each budget to have an amount that is being allocated into the OPEB trust just as a routine part of the budget. Since we haven't done this for many years, but have continued to hire and promise to those people we've hired that we would have this, it's something that we've needed to do a little bit of catch-up on, and this is just an opportunity to take a little bit of the excess funds from this year and do it. It's unlikely that we'd be able to do that amount every year into future years, and we would not ask for that.
So, it sounds like you are trying to study a mechanism or some way to continue some appropriation each year into this fund, so it's not just a one-off...
Correct.
...time. And then, as part of that discussion, are you considering, for example, asking Town Employees to possibly contribute a little bit more, so it's sort of a balanced approach to this fund?
That's a difficult topic because the employees have negotiated through their collective bargaining arrangements, agreements, for health insurance, and there is a health insurance mechanism where there's a contribution. And I don't know the details, and I think that's a good question to ask again at Town Meeting, as far as whether... what retirees are paying into the monthly premium, unless Mr. Poehler has an answer to that question.
By the way, I'm Sandy Poehler, I'm the Finance Director for the town. The town pays either 75% or 80% of the premiums, depending on whether it is a PPO plan or more likely an HMO or a retiree supplement plan. And we have, over the years, made certain benefit changes, and we continue to talk with our unions and so forth about benefit changes to try to constrain the increases in cost. And I'd just say, for the last couple of years, we've been able to have zero increases in the rates that we charge employees, and consequently, that we ourselves pay. And that's been the result of some of those negotiations over the past few years.
Yeah. And I guess one kind of observation I'd make, and then I should yield the floor because we need to get on to the next warrant article, but it's a very good question. The OPEB trust is for the town to pay the town's share of the expenses for retirees. And so, what we would be doing, if we asked the employees to pay into the trust, would be they're paying money to pay the town's share of the expenses, as opposed to what Mr. Poehler was describing, which is for retirees, in addition to the town's share that comes... would come out of the OPEB trust and currently comes out of the pay-as-you-go plan, we would... they are paying their own premium. So, are you...
I think we should move on to the next one. At the end, there's going to be time, though. Article 5 is asking from the capital program debt authorization for roadways, I believe it is. And Guilford Mooreing, Director of Public Works, will explain this one.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here, having me here. This article is to authorize another bonding issue for road paving. When, about two years ago, we authorized $4.5 million. At that time, we rated our roads on a scale from 0 to 100. Our overall rating was about 40 out of 100. We paved everything, we came up to about 60, and we want to keep moving up and try to get our rating of all our roads up to 70. We have about a $19, $20 million backlog on work we think we should do. So this request, we thought we'd ask for another bonding issue. We asked for $3 million to start with. $3 million doesn't fit into the capital plan. $1 million fits into the capital plan right now very well. And so, the $1 million will be used on local minor streets at this time. That's the goal. Neighborhood streets. We'll pave neighborhood streets, and hopefully catch up a little bit and move our overall condition index of our roads up a little bit. And that's what it's all about. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
Behind you.
Behind.
I have two questions. The first question has to do with what roads you propose to pave. I know there's some streets, especially between essentially Route 9 and Main and Amity, that are still in pretty bad condition. And so, I just would like to know that. And then, the second question is maybe a finance question that, if you can't answer, or somebody maybe from the Finance Committee would answer, which is, what is our annual payment for the previous bond issue, and what would this annual payment be? And to what extent would this displace other spending in the town? Or have we agreed that we won't allow these costs to displace other spending?
I'll take the list of streets. The... When we first... Like I said, when we first did this, we proposed $3 million. And that $3 million actually covered all the minor streets. These are the local neighborhood streets that were rated as a zero. When we cut back to $1 million, we had a whole bunch of streets left over that were zeros that we need to look at. So we have a list. It's actually still up to discussion with the town manager before the actual final list is recommended. So, we're actually in neighborhoods. Echo Hill South, we have some streets we listed. High Point area, there's some streets listed. Just about every neighborhood in the group in the town has some streets in that list. The question will be how we divide the $1 million up over that, and that'll come down to the town manager and the select board making a decision about that. The finance issue is much better left to our finance person.
As Guilford mentioned, when he first proposed bonding for these roads, he suggested $3 million worth of projects. But, as he said, we didn't think we could afford that. At $1 million, it will mean about $125,000 per year in debt service costs. That's the principal and interest payments that we'll have to pay on the bonds. We could fit that in with our overall capital spending. We took this to the JCPC, Joint Capital Planning Committee, and showed them how this expenditure would fit in with the overall goal of, in this coming year, spending 7% of our tax levy on capital. If we spend 7% and we do this bond, and we take into consideration the other projects that we know about from last year that people asked for, we think that we can afford this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Article 6, the approval of multi-year solar agreements. And this is Sandy Poehler, our Finance Director, will explain.
So this article is about the town manager's ability to sign contracts to procure solar power for the town and engage in solar projects. There are really three parts to this article. One, it will allow the town manager to sign agreements for the town to act as a host customer for solar projects. Every solar project has to have a host, a customer. And because municipal projects have certain advantages, both in terms of getting in line or what they call the queue with WAMICO for getting approval for solar projects, and because the amount state law would give in reimbursement to those projects, if they're municipal projects. Projects that have a municipality as a host customer have an advantage over purely private projects. I will come back to that and the implications to that in a minute, but I want to just highlight the other two things that this does. The other thing is it gives the town manager the ability to sign contracts where we buy solar power from developers. As you know, we have a solar project at the landfill. That was originally proposed to generate 4.75 megawatts of power, enough power to cover the needs of basically all the accounts for the municipality. In other words, the town building accounts. So the lights in this building, or in the Bang Center, and DPW, and so forth. As we have gone forward with that project, it's generated a little bit of controversy that you might have heard about. But it's also meant that we've looked at some of the design and looked at ways that we might reconfigure the project. Maybe make it a little smaller, move it away from the neighbors a little bit. If we do make it a little bit smaller and cut down the amount of solar power we're getting from that project, we still need the power, so we want to be able to get solar power from other projects. And this would allow the town manager to sign contracts for other solar developments. We are in negotiations with the same people who are the developers for the landfill project. They are looking at other projects in sites outside of the town of Amherst, with the agreement that we would pay the same amount for electricity, solar power, for our project. Let's say that a neighbor community built a solar project. We would pay the same amount as we're going to pay for the solar power from the landfill. So, from a financial point of view, it's going to be a good deal. But the town manager would need the flexibility to do that. And the third thing that this article does is simply allow him to enter an agreement with WAMICO for what's called net metering. That is the way utilities reimburse people who produce solar power for that solar power. It's sort of like the idea of how your meter runs backwards if you have a solar power in your own house. If you have a solar project like the one at the landfill where there is no meter that's running backwards, because there's no meter at a landfill, you get a credit, a net metering credit, from WAMICO, which is then applied to all of the town's other bills. So this third part allows us to do that. Those are the basic components. The... You've probably seen in the paper a couple of weeks ago, there was a proposal in North Amherst for a solar development at some Kohl's property. They've approached us to be the host customer for that project. It means they would build a solar project up there. They would then sell that solar power to whatever customers they could find. The draft agreement we would have puts it on them to sell, to find buyers for the power. But significantly for the town, what it would do is, they are willing to pay us a fee of about $18,000 a year to be the host customer for that project. Because, as I said before, it's advantageous to them to have a municipality as the host customer, and they get better rates from WAMICO on the net metering that they receive. So we think that is a good deal for the town. Finally, we need, or the town manager needs this authority because these are long-term contracts. By the nature of the development, solar contracts and projects go on for 20, sometimes 25 or 30 years. Any contract that lasts more than three years for the town manager to sign needs Town Meeting approval. So that's why we're coming to you for that approval. Even if the town manager has that authority, if any of these projects is built in town, they would still have to go through all the regular permitting processes and so forth. This applies only to the town's ability to buy or serve as a host customer for the projects. Are there any questions?
My name is Mary Streeter, and I'm from Precinct 8. I have a couple of questions. One is a concern. I'd like to see more solar on buildings around town, and I'm just curious if we were to have all of our needs met with the landfill and maybe this North Amherst project, would the town still be willing to put solar panels on top of its buildings? And my other question is, I've heard some talk, and I don't have the specifics of it, that electric rates may be going down as more and more municipalities and individual residences put up solar panels. And so, what is the plan for us if we are in a locked-in, long-term rate? Can it be revisited periodically so that we're not paying more than we should for the electricity? Thanks.
As to the first question, we did a survey of potential solar sites at the time that we were looking at the landfill project. We looked at various buildings and so forth, and we have an assessment. Some buildings are better than others. You have to look at things like how old the roof is, or like a building like this doesn't really have a good roof for that. So I think we'd be open, but quite frankly, the best sites that we found are the ones that are on land. Whether it's the landfill, which seems like the best use of land, there are some others that we might look at. It would depend on how much more solar power we need for our own needs, and that's one of the things we're trying to balance. In other words, we don't... We won't build more solar panels than we have capacity to actually use the In other words, we don't, we won't build more solar panels than we have capacity to actually use the power. Because then we wouldn't have anything, anywhere to go with it. Mary, your second question was about the price. Our current contract has an escalator of a 1.5% per year on the price that we're going to pay for electricity, which is well below historic levels for energy costs. There's a lot of speculation about what might happen with energy costs in the short term, particularly with natural gas and the effect that has. I think in the long run, energy prices will meet the rate of inflation. I don't think they're going to go below the rate of inflation. And so I think, and that 1.5% escalator is well below what inflation has traditionally been. So the contract doesn't provide for a mechanism for revisiting the price, but I think it's a low enough inflation rate that I think will be protected.
Alan Powell from Precinct Four. And I have a question about hosting for a solar array outside the town. Why wouldn't the municipality that it's in do that?
It's the deal. The deals that Smart Energy has, is looking at right now, just the way they have negotiated, or they're talking about these deals with private landowners. They've had us as the host customer. Theoretically, I suppose it could, but there's no, there's no rule that would require it to be one way or the other. It's a good question, but that's just the kind of deals they've come to us with. Pardon me? I think frankly, sometimes it's just a matter of, that's the easiest way to get the deal done.
One more question at the back.
A couple of questions. One is with regard to the schools and school buildings. Whether this authorization would extend to the elementary schools, but not to the regional schools? In terms of, since we have two elementary schools that are scheduled at some time in the future for renovation? And whether this authorization would be sufficient? In other words, would the manager be signing that, or the school superintendent? And would this be sufficient? The other question is with regard to the, does this authorization touch on the issue of where essentially the majority of the potential benefits that have been written about in the press would come from the increase in electrical rates that we would benefit from, even though they would be detrimental to the residents of the town, that the town, because it has a solar array on the landfill, there would be potentially over 20 years, millions of dollars of benefits. And are we again betting against our residents in order to benefit the town? Or is this simply a situation of generating electricity, running the meter backwards, and stopping there? In other words, do these contracts involve both, or simply the running the meter backwards?
I'll try to answer both those quickly, because they get. As to the first, about school buildings, I think if we were to put solar panels on school buildings, that would obviously require the school committee to be involved in that. They're making a decision about the use of their buildings and so forth. Once that decision was made, and they wanted to have solar panels on their buildings, then this would allow the town manager to sign a contract with the developer to put those on. But you'd have to go through the usual approval processes for the use of a school facility. I don't see this as, these contracts as being to the detriment of the ratepayers in town. I'm not quite sure what you mean by that. Solar panels generate electricity that gets fed into the grid. We then get a credit from Wimiko under provisions of state law for that power. And I think it's actually a good deal for everybody involved. The state law mandates that the utilities provide those rebates all over the place. We're better off if we're getting them, as opposed to somebody in another town getting them. So I think it's a win for ratepayers and taxpayers here in Amherst.
We need to go on to Article Seven. Olympia Drive Street Acceptance. And David Zomek, Director of Conservation and Development, will explain this one.
Thank you very much. I think Mr. Poehler might have taken one of my two allocated minutes. I'd like to ask for one additional minute back, if I could. On the agenda, I think I'm given two minutes. I'll try to stay within that. This, as most folks know, you're very familiar with Olympia Drive. And Olympia Oaks are the project that the town has supported, a 42-unit affordable housing project that we have partnered with HAP Housing on. This project has come before town meeting a number of times, and we're moving that process forward with Article Seven. Essentially, the article has two parts. One is to accept the public way, as most, accept the road as a public way. As most people know, the road itself is actually owned by the university at this time. The second part of the article actually asks town meeting to authorize the select board to accept easements. We still have to finish the entire project. We need to upgrade some of the water and sewer infrastructure. And HAP will be doing that as our partner. But in order to do that, we need to accept easements. On Monday night, based on some new developments with HAP, on Monday night, the select board actually voted, and I wanted to make everyone aware of this, there will be a new motion to actually only move forward with one part of Article Seven. Excuse me. And that will be the part to authorize the select board to accept the easements. At this time, we feel as though it's better to wait until spring town meeting to move forward with the acceptance of the public way, and so to do it in two parts. So there will be a motion to do that on the floor of town meeting to basically deal with one part of the article and not the other. We'll be back before town meeting in the spring to address the acceptance of the public way. As HAP puts together their funding packages and can present us with all of that, we'll come back to town meeting in the spring and do that piece. And we hope to be under construction sometime in 2013. So I think I'll stop there and take questions if there are any.
The question is, when this project started out, we had some assurance that if we accepted the road as a townway or engaged in the taking of, or the acceptance of an easement, that eventually, when the road became a public way, it would have been, it would be an actual public way like any other road, fully meet the town's standards and be well-paved and so forth. And we understood that, we were led to understand that this was going to be the responsibility of the university, which actually owns the property that abuts this road for most of its length. Has something changed with regard to that? Or is that the issue that you're attempting to negotiate throughout the winter so that we can address it in the spring?
That's a great question. As many folks know, this is about a 25-year project, and I haven't been with the town for 25 years. I don't know the full history. Certainly, Mr. Rosenblatt, who was here 25 years ago and began this long process, would know the answer to that. But somewhere along the way, actually, the plan did change, Vince. And the plan for a couple of years has been for HAP to assume as part of their entire funding package, the cost of improving the roads. So yes, there is an assumption that the road will be improved to the town's standards. It's about a $500,000 to $600,000 project to do that. And we will count on our partner, HAP, to bring that money forward, to make the road and bring it up to standard before or as we are accepting it. So that is the plan. And to my knowledge, there's no plan to have the university participate in that, in that part of the project.
Going on to Article Eight.
Thank you.
Community Preservation Act. Mary Streeter, Vice Chair of CPAC.
Hi. Normally, we do our proposals for town meeting in the spring. But last spring, you may recall, that we asked to set aside $200,000 for some open space projects that weren't ready for the town meeting in the spring. And so Dave has brought those forward to our committee in September. We had a couple of meetings there. And there are three proposals, which we have agreed to recommend to town meeting for funding. Those proposals were voted six to zero with three people absent. And each one of them will require a state-matching grant in order to go forward. So if we don't get the grant, we will not, the project won't happen. We're hoping to have that information by town meeting, but the state has its own timetable. The first project that I'd like to talk about is the Ritchie property on Bay Road. This would have a matching land grant, which stands for Local Acquisition for Natural Diversity. And that would be a 70% from the state and 30% from CPA funds, which would be about $151,500 in CPA funds. This property is, what I've heard, spectacular. That it's about 20 acres. There is a house on the property, but two acres with the house on it would be carved out of the full 22 acres. And so we'd be preserving, for conservation and recreation purposes, 20 acres. The kind of recreation would be passive. It would be for bird watching, picnicking, walking trails, things like that. So it's really a conservation project. There is some farmland, which could be leased to farmers. There's a plan to put along Bay Road, a small parking lot. And there are some, there's an old farm road there that would be a trail leading to the top, which has some wonderful scenic views. This map that's before you right now is to show you the general context. Both the state and the town have been trying to preserve as much of the Holyoke Range as they possibly can. And on either side of the Ritchie property, which is outlined in yellow, you can see that there have been some small roads or some long driveways with houses on them that have already started to be built there. So this is under threat of development, but the Ritchie family would like to, you know, preserve the property, as would the people in the next project that I'm going to talk to you about. But they can't just donate it to the town. So we're hoping to preserve it. It would allow for picnicking. It would allow, you know, wonderful views. And it would be a good asset for the town to have, as well as protecting it from development. The next property, the Brunel property, is on Potwine Lane. And it's just about directly across the street from the current recreation center. This would be a partnership grant with 50% coming from a state grant, if we get it, and 50% coming from CPA funds. And that would amount to $81,500 in CPA funds. This project would have two phases. The first phase this year would be the long, narrow strip, the part outlined in yellow. And then there's a very lighter part outlined in yellow that would be Phase Two. So the first year, we would want to preserve 16 acres. In the second year, we would preserve another 10. This, again, is under threat of development. The family has already carved out part of the lot for a family member's home, I believe. This would not ever turn into soccer fields or anything. This would be passive recreation, such as walking, cross-country skiing, bird watching, hiking, things like that. And again, this family has wanted to preserve this for a long time, and we do too. It consists of woodlands, wetlands, and a hay field. And we could, the field could still be hayed, and that would be something that the town could derive some money from renting it to a farmer. The third project is the North Common proposal. And that would have a matching grant called the Park Grant, which stands for Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities. What this, again, would have a 70% match and a 30% match of CPA. And that would, the total cost of that project is close to $530,000. With, that's, again, a two-year project. The first year would be to get public input from area businesses, public at large, you know, town folks, to see how to design the North Common. Right now, it's got some issues. And there are some photos that we'll be showing you that show you some of what the current problems are. The soil is becoming compacted, because the common is very heavily used. And there are some walkways there that aren't necessarily in the best place. So some of the trees are having issues because of the kind of soil compaction. There are also some drainage issues there, too. So the first year, there would be a design process similar to what happened with Kendrick Park. There would be an outside firm hired for $50,000. And they would come in and complete a design by, I think, next June. The second year would be to construct the renovations that the town has agreed to do, with the community input. There needs to be some site work done, some drainage. Things have to be taken care of. There would be new benches, sidewalks, some possible trees, some returfing. So a lot of things have to happen there. There are also some safety issues currently that Dave maybe can tell you a story about when the state grant guy was here visiting. So those are the three projects. And the first year, what we'd be asking for from CPA funds would be $15,000. And that would be, if we get the grant, matched with $35,000 the first year. And the second year, I think, oh, here are the numbers. Okay, so you can see what's up there now. Are there any questions? Vince?
It was a little hard to follow on the map, on the first two projects. And I wonder if you, if somebody who has a pointer or is capable of showing us on the map for the Ritchie property and then the property on Potwine Lane, which parcels we're actually talking about and where they're located?
It's on the south side of Bay Road. It's to the west of Mechanic Street. I think it's in between Chapel and Mechanic. And it's outlined in yellow there. But if you, Alan, can you go to the first map? I think you might be able to see the other streets where Mechanic is and where Chapel is there. I had asked a couple of people for pointers, and sorry about that. I think it would have helped. All right, Dave, you want to take over?
So if I could add just one thing. Vince, are you, did you get that answered? Or do you want to see the other map as well?
On that map, it would be helpful to know which parcel we're talking about.
It's the one in yellow. It's outlined in yellow, as Mary said. Mary did a fantastic job. I think we're going to add her to staff, a volunteer staff member.
The thing I forgot to say is that staff are the ones who are totally working on getting us all these grants. So hopefully, they're successful in doing that.
Yes, I'll put a plug in for that. So another plug, we have, we have, thanks Guilford. So we have put in three grants for each one of these projects. And just on the two open space projects, I want to reemphasize the fact that we are not looking staff, and the Conservation Commission are not looking around kind of willy-nilly for projects all over town. This is a very directed effort. We, I usually bring the Open Space and Recreation Plan with me to any meeting. I forgot it tonight. But that is really our guiding document that really directs us toward the priority pieces of property in town. As you can see, for protection. As you can see on the Ritchie property, it is surrounded by other protected land, both from the town's efforts and the state's efforts. We have a willing landowner. We have a landowner who's been very, very patient with us. We have a landowner who's been very, very patient with us, and we have multiple resource values. We have farmland, we have view shed, we have wildlife habitat, we have trails. Historic resources is something that we didn't mention, but this is a very historic area, part of Town Bay Road. There are a number of mill sites on there. Just adjacent to this, there was a significant mill site with a dam that you can still see the remnants of the dam that served the mill. So it's a very directed program. Each one of the open space projects was voted on unanimously by the Conservation Commission to be recommended to the CPAC. The Brunel property on, on Pot Wine Lane, again, high priority, two-phase project. We're partnering with the Kestrel Trust, as many people know. The Kestrel Trust has been a wonderful partner through the years, helping us acquire a number of pieces of property, and equally as important, raising matching funds. So this is a 50-50 grant, 50% in CPA, 50% provided by the state. On the Park Grant, and a wonderful job, again, by Mary describing the North Common, I just want to say, throughout the week, over the weekend, take a look at the North Common. It is a place that desperately needs attention, staff, various committees, feeding staff, ideas and concepts. Again, as Mary said, this would be a design-build project. The first six months, if we're successful in getting the grant and town meeting supports the effort, we would take the first six months of 2013. We've got support from the bid, from the Chamber of Commerce, from the Historical Commission, from the LSSE Commission, to do really a community-wide planning effort. The two designs you see, and will see on the, in your packet in town meeting, they are not set in stone. For the grant, we needed to turn something in. We had to turn in a preliminary design. Staff of DPW Planning came together and said, "Let's put something forth. We know we need new sidewalks, we know we need new walkways." The planters around the trees, take a look at them, they're from the 1960s, they're railroad ties. I have that on pretty good authority. I know the gentlemen who put them there, they haven't changed much since the 1960s. Erosion, compaction, the trees are in, in pretty sad shape out there. We need to help the Town, the North Common, it's the central part of, of our downtown.
One thing that was not clear, are these conditional on receiving grants?
Yes.
All three?
All three are.
Okay.
And we hope, as Mary said, to have word on the grants to bring into town meeting. We can't guarantee that, but that's our hope. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Article nine is a general bylaw, talking about banning styrofoam products in restaurants and town use, and this is something that the Town Recycling and Refuge Management Committee have been working on, and Cynthia Brubaker has been working with them and is going to explain how that works.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Article nine of the town warrant, if adopted, would ban the use of expanded polystyrene. Styrofoam is considered a copyright name, but it's expanded polystyrene from disposable food and beverage containers in food establishments in the town of Amherst. This article is being brought to town meeting by the Town Committee on Recycling and Refuge Management. The League of Women Voters and Hitchcock Center for the Environment have been working in a coalition with this committee to bring this forward to town meeting. And I am one of the representatives on the Foam Subcommittee and also act as a representative of the League of Women Voters on the committee. Some people had the impression that this was done 20 or 25 years ago, and have expressed that to us. It was brought to town meeting at that time, and it didn't pass, and it languished, and the committee has actually been looking into this for the last couple of years, and this summer, we got underway and did a lot of footwork. So why now? First, a growing awareness of the dangers of styrofoam, recently added to the list of carcinogens by the Department of Health and Human Services. There's a growing concern about our landfills. Landfills are being inundated with styrofoam products, which are not biodegradable, not compostable, and not recyclable. While not having much weight, they take up a lot of space in landfills, and all this waste has to go somewhere. We'd found out by talking to restaurants, all the restaurants, well, 99.9% of the restaurants in Amherst, that close to 70% of our restaurants are doing this, and if they aren't, they use very little styrofoam. We found out that all the schools, and UMass, Hampshire College, and Amherst College have also stopped using it, for the same reasons that I mentioned. So they're not using it in their dining halls, lunchrooms, and UMass no longer uses it in their sports events, in the arenas. The taste of Amherst this year was styrofoam-free for the first time, and it was a big success. There are now many more products on the market, as opposed to 20 or 25 years ago, that make alternative products that are compostable and/or biodegradable. So the market has improved, and the costs continue to come down on those alternative products. So, what does this article mean? It means that for any takeout or take-home from food restaurants, fairs, festivals, or large public picnics, there would have to be a switch to products that are not made with expanded polystyro, styrofoam, polystyrene. However, some people have asked, "Does this mean in grocery stores, the packaging that meat goes into or produce?" No, because that is not an edible take-home item. The article would not take effect until July the 1st, 2013, and if any establishment feels that there is an undue hardship in finding alternatives, they can be granted a one-year deferment after this takes place, and there is an opportunity for another year deferment. So one of the things that the committee wanted to do was try to make this as restaurant-friendly as possible, and give people a chance to use their stock and to find alternatives. There is a compliance element. If, if, if a restaurant is out of compliance, they could be fined $100 after their first violation, after a warning, and $250 after a second violation. The Health Department and the Department of Public Works will be the enforcement agencies. The committee and the organizations that have been working on this view this as an educational as well as a legalistic issue. We've visited almost every restaurant in town, as I said, and we're surprised at how many were already doing this. And we want to work with restaurants in helping them find distributors. In fact, we have been doing that. We've met with a group in Greenfield, and we're trying to bargain with them to bring costs much further down if we can give them bulk orders. By the way, styrofoam is very cheap, and that's why it's used. So we're working toward helping the restaurants. We want to help the restaurants in Amherst buy in bulk at lower costs. So where else has styrofoam, this ban on styrofoam been, been passed? All over the country, there are places that I could name, from California all the way to the east. Kind of started in California, but in Massachusetts, Nantucket, and Great Barrington now are completely styrofoam-free. Brookline and Boston are considering it this fall, maybe tonight, and North Hampton is looking into it, to do it this year also. So this is definitely a wave of the future, and we think the time's right. So, answer any questions? Yes?
Noni?
Noni, it's a question.
Does, does this cover, you, you mentioned in a grocery store, it wouldn't cover the packaging for meat products, that sort of thing, but would it cover, a lot of grocery stores have food you can take out?
Yes. It would be takeout, like coffee and, yes.
And does that also include convenience stores?
Yes, yes, it would be town-wide. And in fact, in Great Barrington, they have chains like Dunkin' Donuts and Cumberland Farms, and they're all going styrofoam-free. So, yes, it would.
I was wondering, some plastics go into the food, they, I was wondering if this is one of those products?
Yes.
And also, it's made out of, these plastics are made out of oil, so it seems to me that this might reduce the demand, maybe slightly, but it's going in the right direction.
Well, yeah, it does, especially in the hot foods, it oftentimes leaches out, that's why they say don't put styrofoam in microwaves, or in cups, it can leach out. So that is one of the reasons this has become more popular.
I suspect that regular providers of food will be able to manage this. The question is, when you have a one-time event, whether they'll find the supply.
Yeah, well, that's one thing this committee wants to help, help them with, because there will be things like festivals and fairs on the common, and so we're, we're willing to work as a partner to help them find places to get those products at a good price, because it is a little more expensive than styrofoam. Styrofoam is very cheap.
I'd like to move on now to the zoning articles. We've reserved most of the time of this evening for those. I think this is always the hardest work for town meeting members, because you really need to do your homework, you need to read the material in your packets, and realize that a lot of work has gone into these articles, and they deserve your attention by really looking through the material that you receive. I'd like to just remind you that, in reading them, the changes in the zoning bylaw, the new parts are in bold italics, and the parts that are being dropped are crossed out, so do spend time on, on these articles. And now, Rob Kroner is going to explain Articles 10 to 15. Rob is Chair of the Zoning Subcommittee of the Planning Board.
Okay, so these zoning articles are easier this year than last year, I think. But they're still, but they still have, they still have a big impact on the town, so it's important to get them right.
And you still need to look at your material and really read it a couple times.
So Article 10, the Public Water Supply Protection article inserts references to Board of Health and State DEP regulations covering water supply protection in two places in the zoning bylaw. Section 3.1, which covers general restrictions in all zones, and Section 3.24, which specifically covers the watershed protection overlay zone. It simply alerts the user of the bylaw to already-in-place regulations without changing existing developmental constraints. This is a housekeeping fix proposed at the request of the DEP when the town applied to renew its water supply management permits. For reference, the watershed protection zone is in the northeast corner of town between Market Hill Road and High Point Drive, near the Atkins Reservoir. Are there any questions on that one? No one's here for that, right? Articles 11 through 15 were developed as part of a multi-pronged attempt to manage changes in the town's rental housing situation that have lately been the source of considerable stress for many neighborhoods throughout town, and an increasing challenge to our public safety and public health departments. The town's response goes far beyond zoning changes, and in fact, these zoning proposals are only a small part of the approach that's under development, a major facet of which is a rental registration and permitting system that would become part of the town's general bylaws, and would be administered by the Departments of Health, Public Safety, and Inspections. So I want to emphasize that these zoning proposals are not intended to be the solution to the problem, but hopefully they'll help. Two of the Articles, 11 and 15, are essentially changes and additions to the Definitions Chapter of the zoning bylaw, intended to help clarify differences between various residential uses, and to enable proper interpretation and implementation of the existing bylaw and the other amendments that will be proposed. Article 11 would add a new definition for lodging or boarding house. The land use category, called lodging or boarding house, is already in the bylaw, but we need a definition so that it is clear what is being regulated. By definition, a lodging or boarding house would be an owner or manager-occupied dwelling in which rooms, not individual dwelling units, are rented to between six and 10 people. There can be only one common kitchen facility, though meals are not necessarily provided. Fraternity or sorority houses cannot be considered lodging houses. The permitting standards for a lodging or boarding house would not change. They are allowed only by special permit in business zones and village centers, by site plan review in the downtown, and not at all in residential zones, though there are some grandfather places that exist. Article 15 would add a new definition for dwelling unit where one does not currently exist. Dwelling unit contains all the facilities normally associated with independent living, including sleeping, cooking, and hygiene, and is useful in understanding the previous definition, among others. Article 15 would also add language to the definition of family or household, to be more inclusive of the kinds of arrangements that we currently consider to be families, such as people living in civil unions, guardianships, and custodial relationships, adding to the existing outdated definition that covers only marriage, blood, and adoption. It would also cover a group of individuals residing together in congregate or group housing. It does not change the four unrelated rule. The Planning Board is interested in developing a definition of functional family that might include more than four unrelated people who actually live as a family, but that is not going to happen this year. Article 15 would also add a new definition of habitable space that would serve as a measurement of the interior living space of a dwelling, as distinct from the building's exterior footprint. This will come in handy if proposed changes in Article 14 are adopted. Article 15 would add a new definition for principal residence, establishing it as the place where an individual, family, or property owner actually lives, as demonstrated by a list of evidence, including declaration of homestead, driver's license, and mailing address, among others. Flexibility is provided for temporary absence for reasons of academic leave, illness, and other things that do not affect permanent residency. Finally, Article 15 would add a new definition for resident manager, which would be someone who lives at a residential, at a rental residence, and is qualified and responsible for its regular maintenance and management. None of these definitions add new regulation to the bylaw. They only make it possible for existing or proposed regulation to be interpreted and enforced under a common understanding of the terms used. So for instance, if a permit granting body requires a resident manager as a condition of permit, it means someone who lives there, not down the street, and someone who actually manages the place, not a volunteer for the tenant list. So those are set up, the big ones, Articles 12 through 14, which are an attempt to more carefully regulate the smaller-scale residential uses of single-family homes, duplexes, and converted dwellings that have become so concerning over the past few years, as the circumstances of those uses seem to have undergone a fundamental change. What these articles represent is a recognition that traditional family residential use, whether by property owners or tenants, is different from residential rental use by unrelated people temporarily living in one dwelling unit. To establish the grounds for the changes being proposed, the preamble that appears before Article 12 asserts that the town considers those uses to be different, and therefore their different regulation is justified. Articles 12 through 14, though they can stand separately, are intended to work together and with the upcoming rental regulation system to provide improved oversight of the rental housing situation in our neighborhoods. Articles 12 and 13 would divide the existing use categories of single-family home and duplex into two use categories apiece, one that would be owner-occupied, and one that would be non-owner-occupied. In both cases, the owner-occupied use would be regulated under the current permitting standards for their uses, while the non-owner-occupied use would require a special permit in all residential zones. For purposes of interpretation, the owner-occupied use of a single-family home would be called Class One, and include tenant households of related people according to the definition described in Article 15. described in Article 15. For duplexes, one or both of the units must be the principal residence, again according to our proposed new definition, or one or more of the owners. A non-owner-occupied use of a single-family home, called Class 2, would be by a group of up to four unrelated people. The non-owner-occupied use of a duplex means that neither unit is the principal residence of any of its owners. Both articles would establish conditions on the non-owner-occupied use category that require the services of appropriate property management, including a resident manager at the option of the ZBA, and the provision of management and response plans and contact information. Additionally, the special permit would expire upon change of ownership, so a new owner would have to reapply for a special permit to operate it as a non-owner-occupied use. Articles 13 and 14 together attempt to clarify the distinction between a straight-up duplex and a single-family home that has been converted to two or more units. A duplex would be a two-family dwelling with an external appearance similar to those of single-family homes in the surrounding neighborhood, with the units arranged side by side or one on top of another, and sharing a common wall or floor slash ceiling. It would generally have to be created from scratch or by the addition of a new unit from substantially new construction. A converted dwelling would be one that involves an increase in the habitable space of an existing structure of no more than 20%, resulting from new construction, or 40% if certain criteria are met, including reuse of materials, historic preservation, and the provision of dwelling units serving disabled or low-income populations. In any case, a converted dwelling use is allowed only by special permit and must be compatible with its surroundings, which is not a change from the existing standards. A couple of other changes to the standards and conditions for a converted dwelling would be that the maximum number of units in the RG and RVC zones would be lowered from six to four to match the limit in the other residential zones, and that the resulting habitable space of any detached unit created would have to be at least 350 square feet, a change from the current standard of a 500-square-foot footprint that lacks clarity about whether it is before or after measurement. So that's the simple version. I can take questions, I've got plenty of time. Excellent, okay.
Oh, there is a question here, yeah.
Is there an estimate of like how many, I guess, dwellings these articles will affect as they, I guess, are now?
In other words, a count of the single-family homes, a count of duplexes, is that what you're asking for? One thing, existing uses are grandfathered, so a duplex that is non-owner-occupied now could stay non-owner-occupied without a special permit. I don't know, does anyone know what the counts are?
I can't give you specific numbers on single-family versus duplex and so forth, and part of the purpose of zoning, as the grandfathering provision indicates, is to regulate new changes in the future. I can tell you that Amherst has well over 9,000 dwelling units, and that since 1950, the balance between owner-occupied and rental properties has been about 45% owner-occupied and 55% rental, and that, while that has gone up and down in different decades, it averages out that way and is that way now, currently. The 2010 census was about that, exactly that division.
When we talk about, you know, an existing property that is grandfathered in, does that grandfathering still carry over when a new owner takes, you know, ownership of the property, or does then the clock start anew and these regulations apply to it?
Right, so it would carry over to a new owner until that owner changes the use. So if the owner, if you buy a single-family home and you move into it, nothing has changed. If you move out and then want to rent that, that's a change of use, it's a different use, so then it would kick in.
May I like to point out that the grandfathering does not apply to illegal uses. There is a duplex that's created without a permit after this is adopted, this would apply to that, and if they were found, they would be required to come into compliance.
How does this apply to accessory apartments and mother-daughters and all of those kinds of places? It looks like you have to make it hand-hand accessible, I don't know what other kinds of requirements suddenly start to apply, but it sounds like there's a lot.
So the question is, how does this affect supplemental apartments? Supplemental apartments, it's already in the bylaw, those are allowed by a special permit, so those are accessory uses, it's not a principal use of the residence. So if you have someone living in a supplemental apartment, that's not a duplex, that's a secondary use of the principal use, which is a single-family home. So it doesn't change that at all.
If a family goes away on sabbatical for a year, how is that handled under this? Is that a new use, or is it just a temporary absence and you don't do anything?
Could you explain that again?
If a homeowner owns their home, and then they want to go away for a year and rent it while they're gone, I'm not sure, is that a change in use, or is it still a homeowner-occupied home?
Okay, so...
With a temporary absence?
Right, so it would depend on who is living there. If you're renting it to a group of four unrelated people, that's a change of use.
I have three questions. One relates to Article 11, the boarding and lodging or boarding house. You talk about not having any, it says overnight stays by transient guests. And this is a college town, I just wonder how that is enforceable? And then the second question, which I think is, would be very difficult, even if you have a resident manager, may go to bed at 10 o'clock and the student comes in at 12. The second question is with regard to Article 12, the single-family home regulation. The definition of family that you proposed, I think, that's proposed in Article 10, there's a, we don't have Class 1 and Class 2 families, and yet, for the purposes of Article 12, we say that if you have a couple with children, and it's rented or they pay to an owner, as opposed to paying to the bank, that's a different use for a couple that pays to the bank, in other words, and you have class, you divide them into Class 1 and 2, Class 2 uses, the Class 1 is the owner-occupied, the Class 2 is the tenant-occupied. How is that not in regulation of the interior area of a single-family home, which is prohibited by the State's zoning enabling act? And then the third question is...
Can I, actually, can I start answering the question so I don't lose track of...
Okay, one more.
So the first one, transient guests means someone who would be staying, renting a room for a night, like a hotel or something. It doesn't mean you can't have someone sleep over. If they, if someone is sleeping over multiple nights, that's a second rumor, so that would count against your limit. But what is not allowed at a rooming or boarding house is renting rooms by the night, or by the weekend or something. So the second one, in fact, the Class 1 single-family home can be occupied, it's actually not called owner-occupied single-family home, I just use that as a shorthand. It's called Class 1, and that is occupied by the owner or another family of related people. The only category that is in Class 2 is unrelated people.
So then the question about Article 13 is with regard to the owner, again, the division of the Class 1 and Class 2 into owner-occupied, and I think this article actually does say owner-occupied, as opposed to making the distinction that you just made with regard to the single-family home. There is in other parts of the bylaw a requirement that if you get a permit under the owner-occupied, it says that it shall be and shall remain owner-occupied. Is it just inadvertence that that language is not in here and can't be added because the warrant has already been posted, or is, was there a reason that that was not provided if that language is not...
Okay, so first of all, just to clarify, in Article 13, the use categories would be called owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied, because it actually does refer to principal residents of an owner, of one or both of the units. So if neither unit is occupied by one of the principal owners, then that is no longer an owner-occupied duplex, it's a non-owner-occupied duplex. And so, again, that would be, if you own a duplex and you lived in one half of it, and then you moved out and rented it to somebody else, that's allowed, but only by a special permit, you would have to get a special permit in order to do that. So that's why, there's no special permit for you to live in the house that you own. But if you move out and rent it to somebody else, then you have to get a special permit.
But Rob, does that mean that single-family homes that are classified as Class 2 now, they don't, they won't need to get a permit, they're grandfathered in?
Well, there aren't any that are classified Class 2 now.
But there are a lot...
Right, yes, yes, right.
And so they wouldn't need a permit?
They would not need a permit, as long as they remain, until, actually, until the ownership turns over. Let me ask.
Grandfathering works under zoning. As Mr. Croner said at the beginning of this, all of these amendments are intended to work as zoning amendments. There is a parallel effort underway currently, and there will soon be a public body working in public on the development of a rental regulation system under the general bylaws. Once that goes into effect, that is in effect immediately, there is no grandfathering. And so what we're doing is several pieces of different kinds of regulation. We're using zoning, because zoning is one of the tools, zoning is accompanied under state law by grandfathering. So in the instance that you cite, again, if the use was being conducted in legal fashion, it's only legal uses, those occupied by no more than four unrelated persons, for instance, that are grandfathered and protected. If the use, if there's five or six or eight people there, then they are in violation of the regulations prior to the adoption of the new regulations, if they're not protected at all.
How soon are we likely to see the next part?
The town is working very hard on it, and the intention is to bring it to the spring town meeting. It's a multi-department, multi-person effort.
So I had two questions, I guess, first of all, I wanted to go back to the sabbatical question, because it seems like there might be a contradiction between the Definitions section that recognizes, that allows for interruptions in residency not being considered a change in status of residency. So if a sabbatical isn't a change in status of residency, then it would seem to me that the requirement, the definition of Class 2, single-family dwelling, would be impossible to meet if you rented out your, because by definition, if you're a resident, you're by definition occupying the building, even if you're away on a year-long sabbatical.
I think you're right, I think I misspoke before. That's, that would be the interpretation I would have.
If someone went away on sabbatical and rented out their house, under the zoning, unless we knew about it, it wouldn't be an issue at all, it would be a change in the use. What the Definitions Section does is define whether or not a location is someone's prime urban residence. It doesn't change whether or not they are in occupancy of that residence. So even if there was an interruption of the use, the intent between now and the spring town meeting would be to capture that and require a permit for it. The person would not lose their residency, but the owner occupancy would have gone away, and so the use would have changed. Again, as with all regulation, whether you're talking about zoning or something else, the purpose is to deal with problems, the purpose is not to be sitting on someone's shoulder watching what they're doing at their breakfast table. The town doesn't care if there's not a problem. Someone wants to rent their house out while they're on sabbatical, and nobody knows about it because there's never an issue, then we don't care, nobody cares. What we care about is if it's rented to eight students or eight people who are transient and only going to be there for a brief period of time, and it's not controlled. When the rental regulation system goes into effect, the intent is that that will go into effect immediately, and thereafter, the statement that we're describing, the person going on sabbatical, regardless of what's happening under the zone, would be a permit to rent the house out.
I'm not sure, are we just asking questions, or can we comment? I'm just...
Really, we're just looking for clarification tonight.
Okay, is it wise, then, I'll do it as clarification, is it wise to use zoning as a stop-gap measure, to complicate our zoning laws with this extra layer of regulation as a stop-gap, six-month measure for a very serious problem? And then do we plan on getting rid of these things afterwards, or will we leave these extra layers in, do we consider that they're still going to be necessary to leave in the zoning bylaw permanently?
So part of what we're doing is establishing that we consider the rental of a place by unrelated people to be a different kind of use than a family tenancy. So whether or not we have a rental permitting system, it still makes sense to have different regulations for different uses. Furthermore, there's no guarantee that, A, that the rental permitting system will actually be ready for the spring, I think it will be, but who knows, or that town meeting will adopt it. So this may be more than a stop-gap measure, and we'll see how effective a permitting system is before we decide whether we need to change them again. If it turns out that our permitting system is so good and so strong that the uses converge again, then maybe we won't need to do these different uses and we can change them back.
Just to follow up on a couple of the comments and questions made by the couple of previous speakers, in terms of the permitting system, that's in the future. There is a lot of desire for it, but we need to see what form it's going to come in, so I think for the moment, we need to just think, well, we don't have it at this point, so let's ask questions based on that. so let's ask questions based on that. So assuming that we have no permitting, it seems to me, at least as I understand the proposed bylaw as it's written, that applies to not all duplexes across town, but duplexes that are going to be created after, if and after, this particular amendment goes into effect. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So assuming that that is so, then we can also assume that duplexes that are currently being rented out to four unrelated people times two will continue to be able to be rented out to four unrelated people times two with no restrictions.
That's right.
Okay. And then we can also assume, I believe, that, say, we've got an owner-occupied duplex, kind of a half-and-half duplex. This duplex already exists. The building, the structure actually exists. If the owner decides that he wants to move out and he wants to rent both sides of the duplex, I'm assuming that he does not have to get a permit to do so because the duplex has already been created. He's not going forward to get a new duplex created. The duplex is there, and he can do what he wants without needing a special permit.
But that would be a use change, so he would need a special permit. That would be a use change.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we're probably ready to move on to the petition articles at this point. Articles, let's see, 16 to 19 are petition articles, and they required the signatures of 100 registered voters because this is a special town meeting. I should remind everybody that when we're talking about zoning bylaw articles, that they do require two-thirds vote. So it's a demanding thing for everyone to understand. And Marianne Adams, part of the Coalition of Neighborhoods, of Amherst Neighborhoods, is that what?
As in, yes, we can.
Yes, yes. She's going to give an overview of their four petition articles.
Yes. Thank you very much. I want to say that the Coalition came into existence more than a year ago as we were working with and regular participants as the public with the zoning subcommittee and the planning board, based on our very serious concern about the rapid acceleration of what I'm calling unregulated commercial rentals in residential neighborhoods. We live, I live in the area south of campus, north of town, but as these unregulated commercial rentals, either in single houses or duplexes, have moved across town, what we've seen is that more and more people have been getting in touch with us about their own tales of horror and woe because of the unregulation that is a characteristic of some, and certainly not all, of these houses. It was an urgent situation that brought us into being, and we are concerned to use what tools are available. And so here I can repeat the wisdom of Mr. Crowner to say, we know that zoning is a tool. It's not the only tool. It's a tool we have in hand now, and we hope for the best with the rental permit system if and when it comes into being. We believe that it will. We know that there's a committee set up, but we are dealing with past-present tense already. So we very much believe that the preamble presented by the planning board represents our sense of urgency. And the articles that we are proposing, we see as complementary, or in some cases, strengthening what is being proposed in the planning board's proposals. I need to say that because we had a September 19 due date to get our citizen petitions in, we had to commit ourselves to print at a point where the zoning subcommittee and the planning board were still working very hard to craft their proposals. And an occasional awkwardness or duplication or difficulty of mapping the one onto the other has come in as a result. I want to note as an overview, oh, I want to say one other word before I go to the overview. I think it's very important that we all understand that many members of our group are lifelong educators at the university and in schools. We enjoy and appreciate being in a college town. We ourselves, many of us, are members of the university community. It is important not to paint us as being anti-student. We very much value our students. We know that we are talking about what is currently, but is tipping over into something else, a very good mix of family-friendly residential neighborhoods with students in rentals, some of which are supervised, some of which are not supervised and therefore problematic. What we are concerned about mainly is to stop the encroachment of commercially purchased and owned homes that are being run as commercial rentals and which interrupt the family-friendly neighborhood experiences that many of us have had in the past. So that's a very important caveat, that you understand what the purpose of our work is. So we're focused on the quality of life in neighborhoods where both families and students live very comfortably. We have noted that there is a seeming contradiction in the master plan between, on the one hand, increased density, particularly in the Amherst Central Residential Neighborhoods, which many of us live in, and on the other hand, preserving the integrity and character of these residential neighborhoods. So that's really the contradiction that we're trying to focus on. We've brought forward three zoning articles that, as I said, either complement or strengthen the current articles by the planning board. And we have a fourth, which is an addition to the current nuisance house bylaw. So we have three zoning articles. We'll be preparing those, presenting those first, and then we will be moving on to Article 19, which is the addition to the nuisance house bylaw. So for Article 16, Denise Barberette was going to lead us through that.
I'm Denise Barberette, 67 North Whitney Street, Precinct 9, town meeting member, and I apologize in advance to those who have heard this once or maybe twice. It is up there. Okay. So as you can see visually on the screen, the version, Article 16, the version of two-family dwellings that we have proposed is very short, sweet, I don't know about, but it's certainly very short and very simple. What Article 16 proposes is very simple and very straightforward. It states that if you start out with a single-family home and you renovate, expand, or put an addition onto it so that the end result is a two-family home, also known as a duplex, you must do so under a special permit before the zoning board of appeals. Article 16 further takes advantage of already extant and applicable language in the zoning bylaw by treating such renovations, expansions, or additions either as conversions, and if you want to look at the relevant section in the zoning bylaw, it's 3.3241, or as supplemental apartments, also known as mother-in-law apartments, which is an accessory use now regulated under Section 5.011. The Coalition of Amherst Neighborhoods has proposed this amendment to the zoning bylaw because of growing concern over what we see as the unintended consequences of another amendment that came before the fall special town meeting of 2008. Before that particular amendment to the zoning bylaw passed, the permitting of duplexes in RG, which is general residence, and RVC, which is village center residence, zoning districts. Before that time, the permitting of duplexes had been under a special permit. After that particular article at the fall special town meeting of 2008, it changed to site plan review. This was one of the first zoning changes that resulted from the master plan, and it aimed to increase density in a modest manner by accommodating two families within what is essentially a structure that looks like it's for a single family. It has the appearance of a single-family house, and it also has the footprint of a single-family house, more or less. By accommodating more families in the central residential districts, this would enhance, but at the same time, protect the traditional family neighborhoods. However, to the dismay of many residents, this has not been the actual result. What we've begun to see are single-family homes that are purchased and then either renovated and divided to accommodate not four but eight individuals. And for one example, you can look at 156 Sunset Avenue. That was a special permit that went before the ZBA within the last two years. I think it was this year, but I don't quite remember. Or we see a single-family home with a large, and in one particular case, a two-story structure that was added on, essentially looking like two houses on a single lot, to, again, accommodate eight individuals, divided between two dwellings. And for this example, you can look at 79 Taylor Street. Both of these properties that I mentioned are student rentals. Now, I can't say for certain whether or not they have been disruptive to the neighborhood. I know with one, there has been at least one police invitation recorded in the Amherst Bulletin Police Log. I don't know about the other. You would have to do your own research on that. But regardless of whether or not you have more police coming to that particular address, what you do have, when you have eight rather than four individuals, is you have more cars, more traffic, more parking, and because these are generally student rentals, you have increased activity, not only during the day, but also at many, if not all, hours of the night. This is not the same type of activity that you would see with what could be considered a more traditional family of a couple or an individual with or without children. So for these reasons, we would like to see the permitting of such two-family homes return to the special permit process so that the zoning board of appeals can decide whether or not such a use is appropriate in RG and in the RG or RVC neighborhood in question from the outset of the process. Rather than leaving open the, at least personally, what I perceive the rather large loophole of a single-family owner-occupied home that, once it has been permitted and expanded or converted into a duplex, could then at some future point become a rental property, it will be the ZBA that makes the decision before the property has actually been built. And they will make the decision as to whether or not the increased density that would result from this duplex will be appropriate for that particular neighborhood, thus providing greater protection for the neighborhood in question. This will also bring duplexes more in line with the permitting requirements for both the conversion of dwellings, which tends to preserve the footprint of the building, perhaps make it a little bit larger, but not radically increase the way we've seen with duplexes. And also the addition of supplemental apartments, which are in general very small, additional dwelling units. There is a limit of 800 square feet to be added when it's a supplemental apartment, 900 square feet, I believe, if it complies with the Americans with Disabilities Act, but no larger than 900 square feet, which is considerably smaller than several of the additions that we've seen added on to become duplexes. And as well, when you have a conversion or when you have a supplemental apartment, you don't have as great a visual impact as when you have a duplex, as when you have an addition put on a single-family home. And in terms of the level of activity it brings, with a duplex, you generally see a much greater level of activity, cars and parking, as I mentioned earlier, when you put a duplex on. So it seems to me that when you have the greater visual and the greater impact in terms of activity when you're adding a duplex, it seems like it's more in line to govern that under the special permit rather than the site plan review.
Do we want to have time for questions on this?
I just wanted to mention a couple more things about differences with Article 13, if that is possible.
Time is, well, it's your choice.
Well, I guess I'll go for questions.
There's a question, thank you.
This might lead you to the point about Article 13. What I was curious about was whether, how people from, how you as petitioners and planning boards see the articles that deal with the same parts of the zoning bylaw. Are they, they address problems in different ways? Are they compatible? Are they supplemental? And if Article 13 were to pass, has anyone inquired with the town moderator whether this article could even be considered as an amendment to the now-changed language that would end the resulting amended zoning bylaw?
I don't know if anyone has asked the moderator about that. Depending on your perspective, people see Articles 13 and 16 as complementary. Some people see them as alternates. I see them as alternates, but that's just my personal perspective. The main difference that I see is that when you divide basically what is the same type of structure and the same type of use, a duplex, with people living in it, two families living in it, regardless of how you define family, when you divide it into two different classes, it seems to me that there's a lot of room for movement between those two types of classes. And if you create an owner-occupied duplex, which will then move to a rental duplex, it seems to me that once the thing is already built and permitted under a site plan review, then you come forward to the ZBA and say, well, we would like to offer it as a rental unit. And to me, it's going to put the ZBA in a very uncomfortable position of looking at this particular building and saying, well, yeah, it's a duplex, but we think it needs to remain owner-occupied. I think there's going to be a lot of pressure on the ZBA to say, sure, special permit, rental, that's fine. We have no problem with that. Whereas if you work with Article 16, before the structure is even renovated, expanded, or added onto to a duplex, the ZBA is going to have the opportunity to look at it, weigh in and say, okay, it doesn't matter if it's owner-occupied. It doesn't matter if it's going to be a rental property. This duplex is going to increase the density in the neighborhood. Let's take a look at the neighborhood and see whether or not this increased density is actually appropriate. So I don't think you will have the same type of pressure to okay a special permit that you would if the building was already there.
A quick question. We need to get on to the next one, but go ahead.
Since the planning board has voted down Article 18, have there been amendments made to the language and to what extent?
No, no, this is Article 16.
Okay. I think we probably need to move on to the next one, but we could have questions at the end. Marianne Adams is going to speak to petition articles, zoning bylaw, converted dwelling standard and conditions.
Okay. I'll get to the if/when in just a moment about 14 and 17, but let me first present the reasoning on 17. The reasoning is to allow for modest increases in density without sacrificing the quality for all residents. The article mandates that for any properties to be converted, we're talking about conversions now, and not duplexes. And so you'll need to go back to the definitional language that the planning board has developed, and we can get into that if you have questions. But we are talking about conversions mainly of many of the large houses in town that have been single-family for many years and are then converted for one of several reasons that I'll go into in just a moment, into a duplex or into a triplex. And we're saying that in the case of these conversions in residential neighborhoods, one of the units shall be and shall remain owner-occupied. We feel this provides the stability associated with owner-occupied properties. It provides oversight of tenant behavior by the property owner, him or herself, and in the event of disruptive behavior by tenants, it assures that neighbors know whom they should contact to address these problems. Now, we have had the good fortune in our neighborhood of having a neighbor who is the chair of the biology department, is an empirical... the chair of the Biology Department, is an empirical scientist, and who has done some very careful studies of the patterns of rentals in the neighborhood to the south of campus. Name is Ralph Colstrom, and he has done a number of presentations to various neighborhoods and to various boards. His study has documented not only the incredible escalation of single houses bought by commercial entities for the purposes of conversion into rentals, but he also documents that all of the chronic nuisance houses in this district are not owner-occupied, and that none of the owner-occupied houses have chronic problems, have, are nuisance house problems, except in one case, a good friend of ours, who was on sabbatical for two years, and the police started getting complaint calls, okay? So, we've noticed that this is an important pattern, and we take it quite seriously. So, we are arguing for owner occupancy, which is going to become a strengthening of Article 14, when I come back to 14. The essence of 17 is about owner occupancy. We think that the original purpose of conversion of these large houses was for affordability, that owners would be able to convert them, rent out one of the two units, live in the other one, help meet the mortgage, help to beat expenses, and I think this is exactly what we wanted to support. This does maintain a family-friendly neighborhood. We want the homes to be affordable by families, and we have found, and affordable with conversions, and we've increasingly noticed that they are being priced out of reach, one could say by the market, except that we've noted that the market in this case consists of commercial entities who are buying these properties in order to convert them for profit. And this has had a seriously deleterious effect on the quality of life in these neighborhoods. We want to maintain the current mix in the residential areas, which we currently have: families, working couples, students. We've talked about the importance of maintaining them as neighborhoods, and not letting them tip into the kind of commercial rental areas that we've seen in many, many other college towns, and that we don't want to have happen in Amherst. I've talked about the data that supports that owner-occupied rentals are not nuisance houses, and that nuisance houses are not owner-occupied. And I feel that, well, we feel, that there is no evidence thus far that management plans work. Management companies are often understaffed for the number of units that they purportedly manage, and we have not had positive experience in trying to use the citizen enforcement mechanisms, either with the management companies or other groups. So, we are taking the tool of zoning to help us with this, and we believe that this tool will be further strengthened when we get a rental permit system, if and when we do. Now, let me then add, and now we're getting into the technicalities and nuances of zoning, that if Article 14 passes with its two, with its conversion regulations, essentially what we would be proposing to do, and I believe this is within the scope of the article, but of course, I do have to get the judgment of the town moderator on this, we would be asking to substitute paragraph five from our article for paragraph six for Article 14. The difference being, in our understanding of this, that in paragraph six of Article 14, the owner occupancy relates only to item B, and we find in item A, a very compelling description of exactly our neighborhood, which would mean that owner occupancy would not pertain there. And instead, in paragraph five of Article 17, we are making a separate sentence relating to owner occupancy, which therefore clearly refers to both A and B, as in the, as in the current proposed bylaw. So, that's, that's the answer about the what-ifs that I suspect you would be wanting to ask.
Here's a question.
Again, I haven't, you know, read these thoroughly, but it seemed that one of the proposals that came before us from the Planning Board would require either the owner to be occupied in one unit, or a person who was representing management. Is that, like a manager of the property would be in one of the other units as part of one of the other? Not necessarily?
If I could follow along your reasoning, yes, I think I know where you're going. We had asked, in the case of Article 13, I believe, this was simply in the early discussion where we were there as the public, we had asked that the term owner-occupant be added to that list of other management options, because we felt that owner-occupant should at least be on that list. And we might ask that in town meeting, if we're able to do so. And I think it's possible that if that language were inserted into the earlier articles, we would get what we feel is essential the town has as a protection. So, we are trying to find the tools and the language that we believe are important to protect the historic residential character, particularly of the community between campus and town, because that's under particular pressure. But we know that this is happening in many other areas of town, and we, we think we understand why that is happening. And our view, or maybe I should speak for myself, about the issues of student behavior that have been raised by many people, is I believe that there are certain living conditions which foster those, and that's what we're trying to get at. The, 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 okay, yeah.
Well, I guess my, I worry that saying specifically it's, one of the units is owner-occupied, I think sort of, on a related issue, might be a detriment to sort of, I think one of the other problems in our town is because of all the student rentals, is that makes it so prohibitively expensive for families to rent, that they can't find opportunities to rent in this town. Whereas, if they had an opportunity to be the manager on-site, because it reduces their rent, or they even get paid for it, and they're able to monitor that other student rental site.
But they would then be an owner-occupant.
No, I'm saying if they were renting that other unit, because they got a discount on the rent, because they're managing.
I see what you're saying, yes.
That is, my worry is that this, it might be too restrictive if it doesn't allow for that kind of possibility, because then I think we'd continue to keep families out of our rental stock.
Yes. Let me just make one quick comment, and then I believe that Vince O'Connor has an addition to this. In my view, we've had some very difficult conversations about rights and responsibilities. And in our view, this is a constraint on owner rights on behalf of the responsibilities of the management of the properties. And we have yet to see that the management plans work. So, in any event, I think that there were some other comments on this, and I.
I'm a little concerned in that we're three minutes over on this particular one, and we still have two to go, and it's after nine. Could we go on, and then at the end, come back to any questions, if there's time, please? Article 18 is the petition zoning bylaw article, replacement of previously existing structure or structures containing dwelling units.
Okay.
Vince O'Connor.
Vince O'Connor, a Summer Street Precinct One Town Meeting member. And this, this article was constructed to essentially deal with problems that might arise in the future, as well as some that have been presented to town meeting in the immediate past. We've had in the last few town meetings, proposals to demolish an entire streetscape in North Amherst, and replace it with multi-story apartment buildings. Those proposals were defeated, in part because of the, the proposed demolitions and replacement. And, and of course, there have been, in other parts of town, structures, both residential and non-residential, being proposed for, and in fact demolished, to accommodate residential construction. So, the purpose of the, of the article is to say that if you do this, if you engage in this kind of demolition, even after you wait a year, if the Historical Commission has found that it's historically significant, you wait a year and you do the demolition anyway, that you can only replace the units that you've demolished on the particular lot with the same number of units that legally existed there before, and the same amount of residential square footage. So, we'll profit you not to do the demolition. Our hope is that rather than doing demolition, people will make use of the existing articles of the zoning bylaw to convert a dwelling from one unit to three or four, to convert an outbuilding from, from a non-residential use to a residential use, or to take an outbuilding on a separate lot and use it for storage or garage, so you maintain the architectural integrity and, and character of the neighborhood. Even before we submitted this article, we had been receiving comments, or certainly I had, as I, as I circulated the article, that, that led to a couple of exceptions that we've since provided in the article, and we will move on the floor of town meeting, and that we've communicated to the planning staff. The first is that we already have a process by which the Historical Commission reviews any demolition permit. So, if they've reviewed, reviewed a demolition permit, and there's no historical, architectural, or geographic character, historic character to, to a structure or to a residence, and then the Planning Board can take on the task of determining whether the demolition of the structure would not adversely affect the integrity, continuity, or architectural fabric of an existing neighborhood streetscape, and grant a special permit to replace that structure with one that has more residential square footage. We do exempt acts of God. People whose houses are destroyed by, by a flood, or by a lightning strike should have the opportunity to rebuild optimally, if they end up with more residential square footage, and I know at least of one circumstance of that. That seems to me to, something that should be on, be on the zoning bylaw. But, so we do want to create an exception for either a residential, non-residential structure that, that's demolished, and the Planning Board agrees that it can go without affecting a neighborhood. But we also provide that there's an exception to that exception, which is that no permit would be issued for the replacement of a residential structure in a, in an area under consideration by a local Historic District Committee, appointed by the Select Board in accordance with state law. And the reason for that exception is we, while a local Historic District Committee is considering what area to cover, and what buildings to cover, and so forth, we, we want to preserve the status quo. We don't want, as the committee's sitting, to have buildings disappearing sort of from the neighborhood in anticipation of their work. So, with that, I'd be happy to take questions. And just to point out that there are, there are, there is one Historic District Committee that is currently in place, appointed by the, agreed to by the Select Board, whose members have yet to be appointed, that's one for North Amherst, and that there is one Historic District Committee that has been requested by the residents of Precinct 10, and that the Historical Commission is due to hear that request and to make a recommendation to the Select Board as to whether a committee should be appointed for that area. So, we know that, one, we've already established a local Historic District Committee for the Emily Dickinson District, and there may be two more forthcoming.
All right. I think we can move on then to Article 17, petition for general bylaw, nuisance house bylaw change. And that's, Melissa Perot is going to do that one.
Article 19, the nuisance house amendment to the general bylaw. Article 19 is intended to add real teeth to a nuisance house general bylaw that has existed with little success since the spring of 2008. The Amherst Police Department inadequately staffed to address the enormity of the challenge, sometimes assisted by UMass Police, has attempted to deal with nuisance houses. These problems, these.
Oh, into the.
These problems?
Lower it a little, so it's right in front of you.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Got better? These problems commonly appear when students live together in unsupervised housing in our residential neighborhoods. Nuisance houses have been spreading to more and more residential neighborhoods throughout the town, despite numerous additional approaches to the problem by the town and university. The size and frequency of the gatherings continue to grow, with increasing violence requiring a greater police presence. Some town residents have had to hire their own security guard in order to gain some order in their neighborhoods. With such facts in mind, these amendments to the existing nuisance house bylaw intend to strengthen the bylaw in a number of ways. First, to extend liability, which is now focused on tenants and property owners, to rental housing management companies. It is evident that while fining students might deter those few from repeat offenses, it does not deter the overall student population. We believe that if rental management companies realize that they can be liable for the misconduct of tenants and the residences that they manage, they will be far more proactive in discouraging misbehavior. Second, to ensure that management companies and property owners are notified of all nuisance violations by designating a town official responsible for sending out letters, providing adequate details of the offense, so that property owners and rental management companies can make appropriate adjustments to their properties and enforcement of their leases. The manager's office was proposed in the amendment, but following conversations with the police chief and the town manager, it has been agreed to assign the responsibility to the police department, and we will make that change on the floor of town meeting. Thirdly, back in 2008, in this very nuisance bylaw that the Select Board supported, the Select Board was required to establish a list of response costs that could be recovered in the case of a nuisance violation. Yet, the Select Board never developed a list of such costs, and thus, none were recovered, potentially costing the town a great deal of money over these years. Our bylaw calls for the creation of such a list, and requires that the costs apply to the first and subsequent violations payable on the third violation by changing "may" to "shall" in the bylaw. Two warnings is a soft approach, considering one receives a parking or speeding ticket on the first offense. But in a change from the original bylaw, the responsibility remains with the property and management company, even if an eviction order is in process. We have a nuisance bylaw that needs to be enforced with financial consequences to property owners and management companies for non-compliance. This is a sensible approach to take now, to encourage responsible management by some absentee landlords, and lessen the burden of response costs to the town of Amherst. Many property owners and management companies are able to operate student rental housing that does not cause disturbance to the neighborhood, and will not be affected in the least by the changes in this bylaw. We hope the changes will be incentive to offenders to promote a change in their attitude that brings disrepute to the town, and disruption and dismay to many permanent residents who have invested in this town for reasons other than profit. If not, the much more onerous permitting law is in the wings. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we go into, ask a question about Article 18?
Okay, one, one question, it's, we're over time. Quite a bit.
My question on Article 18 is for families who live in small houses, which, believe it or not, there are some in town, for example, a two-bedroom house, and if they want to adopt a child, have a second child, have a third.
adopt a child, have a second child, have a third, or have foster families, and they need to build on in order to accommodate those extra children, how, how does that get addressed in this?
It would have no impact. In fact, I can refer you to a house on the street in which I live, where the entire second story of family bought a house that had, from a single individual who had left town or passed on, and added a, an entire second floor to that house. They have, I think, two or three children. That house is, you know, those additions fit right on the existing structure. That was simply a building permit issue and never came before the zoning board. Expansions of single-family homes where the purpose is to more adequately house the present residence that doesn't create a second housing unit are not governed by the zoning bylaw. They are governed by the building, the building code and, and the building commissioner's office. And if anyone has a, any single-family homeowner has a desire to expand their residence, they should simply, they and whoever, whatever consultant or architect or contractor they have should simply go to the building commissioner's office and, and the office will, will discuss their plans with, with you and so forth.
No, I understand that currently, but this article seems to.
This article will not affect that at all. I just, I can say that it will not affect it at all. The expansion of a.
How do you guarantee that by this wording, though?
No, it won't affect it at all. In other words, if you expand a single-family home, you don't, this is, this involves the demolition of structures. If you want to demol, entirely demolish your house.
It says to reconstruct, rebuild.
After demolition. That, it has, it has to do with the demolition. Believe me, if, if you can point out the wording, we can discuss it afterwards. But if you can point out the wording, we'll be happy to make sure that the language says what we intended to say. But in, in, in no case.
I'm thinking of, you know, there's a fire.
In no case is this intended to, or does it say that the expansion of a single-family home would be affected by this? Yeah. An electrical fire, you can rebuild. And if you're, if it's a single-family home, you can, you can present that. The only problem, I will say thing about fires, especially about rental housing, is that when I first moved here, we had adjacent communities to the south of us who had fires in residential properties almost weekly. And, and quite frankly, residential fires, 80 to 90 percent of those which are deemed suspicious, the individuals responsible are never identified. So we certainly do not want to encourage people to even consider what would happen if the house were, were demolished by fire. But you, you asked the question about adding to a house. You didn't ask the question, you asked your initial question about adding to a house. You didn't ask the question. I, I think that that, that like, if you can point to a situation, I'd be happy to discuss with you how to avoid it.
Some of these questions hopefully can be answered at town meeting. And I'd like to just remind all of you that if you're interested in making amendments, remember that what an article proposes to do cannot be increased, it can be decreased. So think carefully if you are considering amendments, because you can remove parts. It's very difficult to add parts. And if there's a question, you really need to discuss this with the town moderator and look into exactly how, what you're trying to do could be done. I'd like for all of you to realize that in addition to the material you get in your packets, that there are going to be two more opportunities to gain more information about articles. One is by going to precinct meetings and having informal discussions about articles that you're concerned about. The schedule for those is on the town meeting site. It also came in your packets. Also was in the Amherst Bulletin today, actually. The bus tour, oh, I'm sorry, precinct meetings are going to be the week leading up to town meeting, okay? The bus tour, which will visit sites connected with articles that we're looking at in this town meeting, is going to be the day before town meeting, on Sunday, the 18th, from 2:00 to 4:00, and will meet in the parking lot of the middle school. People should plan to be on the bus at 1:45 because we really leave at 2:00, and it's always sad to see people running after us, and that actually happens. So if you want to come on the bus tour, which is really interesting and a good chance to see areas you're not familiar with, please come on time. I'd like to thank everybody that took time to explain articles and for all of you at home in your cozy warm rooms. I hope that you were able to follow what we were doing tonight and tell your friends that these rebroadcasts on the town meeting warrant review will be frequent and can also be watched on demand. Amherst Media is a huge, huge resource, and you can even look up planning meetings, select board meetings, all of the town meetings that are doing big things are going to be available on the on-demand part and even rebroadcasts. Also, please fill out the evaluation forms, all of you people that are here tonight. Thank you very much.